Okay, I will start out, I am going to be calling our meeting to order, it is 7:09 PM. Alright, so as we call our meeting to order first, we will all do our own pledge of allegiance at home, just do it quietly please. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Alright, so, um, according to the, the order of the Governor Holcomb, who has extended COVID-19 pandemic orders, we are still allowed to have unlimited meetings without meeting in person. Our town is availing itself with this particular provision of the Governor's order. Because we are operating under this guidance, all the votes will be roll call votes for anything we vote on today. I'm saying this to make sure it is clear to everyone here today that we are using the state guidance as a local government entity. We can limit the amount of meeting activities to essential issues and items that affect COVID-19. This is all provided through the Public Access Counselor's Office as well, to make the meeting open for anyone to listen. And it depends on time, how much comment can take place at the end of the meeting. I will mute everyone but the town council and Joan while the procedures are going on. We will never limit access to anyone listening, uh, in on what is taking place. Depending on time, public comments will be heard at the end of the meeting today. Our roll call. Joan, do you want to do a roll call?
Yes, I can do a roll call. Dinah Dumbrus?
Here.
Excuse me, Michael Martinez?
Present.
Pam Doobie, we found out she's absent, right?
Absent.
And Michael Lencioni?
Here.
And Rich Young?
Here.
And of course myself, I'm here. Do we have the attorney on this week or not?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, um, Fire Chief Gary Bendix?
He's, he's absent, but he sent me a, um, a report.
You have a report, okay. Police Chief Bob Zokowski? Okay, Park Board President Dolly Millig, I know she's absent because I spoke with her today.
Oh yeah.
And BZA President Matt Bone, I'm sorry.
He is not present.
No, and I talked to him today also. Steve Thomas, Building Commissioner?
Steve Thomas notified me that he will not be able to participate tonight.
Okay, and Ray Dumbrus?
No, he's not participating tonight.
Okay, you've got him listed as a DNR. DNR what?
He is the contact-
Is he getting paid by the DNR?
Flood plane, yeah.
Flood plane is what you want then, not DNR.
Yeah, he's the flood plane administrator.
Okay, I'll change it to flood plane. Okay, that sounds true.
Okay, thank you very much Joan. Alright, um, I would like to ask everybody present, the board members, whether they had any additions or corrections to the agenda. Anybody?
Oh, I reviewed it, I did not.
Alright, anybody else? Mike Lencioni?
Nope.
No, Rich?
No.
Okay, thank you. Alright, well then we're going to keep to the agenda as had been prepared. I will ask, whoops, I will ask Joan to present the meetings to, oh, then for agenda, I'm sorry, I'm going to take that back. One step backwards, here we go. I need somebody to make a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Marquita seconds.
Okay, Michael Lencioni moved, Michael Martinez seconded, uh, to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor, and I will ask this as we have to ask everything today by roll, Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Approve him, Michael Martinez.
I approve.
Okay, Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. All present approve the agenda as presented. Uh, let's move on to the minutes. As everybody had a chance to review the minutes that Joan presented to us.
Yes.
Yes.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes as they were presented and written?
I have a correction.
Oh, I might have known.
Okay.
Page three. Under Code Enforcement Officer?
Yes.
It says Rich Young had someone he contacted, but she didn't return his call.
That's what it said, I listened to the tape twice and that's what it said because I thought. Is that correct?
No, I didn't contact any lady.
Okay, then that should be changed to he then, right?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, it'll get changed to he, but listen to the tape on, on, on the internet.
Okay, thank you Joan. Alright, any other additions or corrections? If there are no other additions or corrections to the minutes, then I will ask, uh, for a motion to accept the minutes as they have been presented?
That's correct, did I make that motion?
Okay, Richard Young moves to accept the minutes, I need a second.
All second.
Okay, Mike Lencioni seconds, it has been moved and seconded to accept the minutes with the correction of the word from she to make it he, under Code enforcement officer. All in favor, Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. All present in favor, minutes have been accepted as read with one correction. Um, at this point in our agenda, I have a presentation of an ordinance that was sent to us from the League of Women Voters. And at this point, I will read the introduction to the, uh, to this resolution. If you are in favor of reading more, I will pull up the entire resolution to read to you. Uh, it will be your choice. It is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana, commemorating the centennial of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment and honoring Women's Equality Day. Would you like me to continue, or do you want to accept this and approve this resolution with just a title?
Title, I'm in favor of.
Okay, and you will have printed copies of this, or I'll send this via email. I thought she had sent it to all of us, but maybe not. So I hope for, forward that to everybody to have, and we will publish it on our website too, so.
Thank you, because I didn't get a copy, I appreciate it.
Okay, very good. Alright, well then for the resolution, do I have a motion to accept?
Yes, I'll move to accept.
Okay, Michael Lencioni, I need a second.
Second, Marquita second.
Okay, Michael Martinez seconds the approval and acceptance of the resolution regarding the ratification of the Nineteenth, uh, the commemoration of the centennial of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment and honoring Women's Equality Day. All in favor will respond by saying aye. Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. All present in favor of approving and accepting the resolution commemorating the Nineteenth, the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment and honoring Women's Equality Day. Thank you to everybody. I think it's sort of awesome. Alright, and especially today, I think it's sort of awesome. Alright, um, alright, let's move on to number six, reports from committees. Uh, Joan?
I have nothing new to add to the job descriptions, we've been swamped with BZA work for the short-term rentals. There's not been time to even think, so hopefully this month we can get together after, after next week.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, how about the invoices and claims?
Yep, we got those. Always have to pay bills. Let me see what I did with it. Okay. Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department, $3,471 for the rent, I mean, sorry, for the rent, for the fire protection. Excuse me, for the rent of the building, $100. Monttown of Long Beach for police protection, $4,735. Republic Services, $3,776 for the refuse pickup. NibSCO for the streetlights, $34.90. Excuse me, uh, the garage for the gas, $96.71. I don't know what they're using in there that they have gas for this amount. Um, for the electric, $8.95. And then we have the Department of Waterworks, the garage for the water, $9.49. And for Kincaid Park, another $9.49. Then we have Brenda for her travel to the post office and to the bank, $48.14. Rich Young, reimbursement for monies he spent at Menards for the split rail fencing and odds and ends for the new trail, $608.2. LaPorte County Building Department for their inspections for the second quarter, which would be from April until June 30th, $550. Comcast for the internet, $79.69. And Summit Supply for the playground equipment, which was that ADA sand digger, for $735. For a grand total of $14,306.34.
Joan, I only have one correction, I think.
What do you think what?
Don't we pay $105 for the rental of the office?
Yes, we do, and that's what's on here. I just read it wrong, I just read it wrong, it's $105.
Okay, because we had that problem years ago, remember? We were paying $5.
Now it's so cheap, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, we own the land, so we can't, they can't complain.
No, they can't.
It's a good deal both ways. So the grand total is still $14,306.34.
Okay, so, thank you very much Joan. Uh, any other questions, any other? Council members, nothing?
I do have a comment on that, Dinah.
Okay.
I have done the summary sheet that all the council members usually sign. We've just changed it so that it shows the department head signature, which you are the executive officer of the council. So they don't have to come in and sign these sheets anymore, I've got a stack of them waiting on my desk.
Okay, so it'll be enough for me to come in and sign those?
That's right, they won't have to.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so I will ask someone to move, uh, to make a motion to accept these vouchers as presented and to approve payment of the bills.
So removed.
Mike Lencioni moves to accept vouchers and approve them for payment, I need a second.
Marquita second.
Since I'm the recipient in some of that money, I don't think I should make a motion.
Thank you. Uh, Michael Martinez, uh, seconded, so all in favor, I will do a roll call vote again, Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. All present in favor of approving and paying out these vouchers. Uh, thank you very much Joan.
You're welcome.
Alright, go on, and-
Dinah, I should, I do want to make a comment.
Okay.
That money that I spent at Menards is only for the material, I did not charge the park board any money at all to do the work and, and my brother needs a shout-out for helping me.
Oh, well, thank you.
We had no problems on Dreamwall or, um, Oakdale.
Okay.
The other end, we hit gravel and there must have been a road through there, I think Joan or Bob has said that.
But my brother, we did it on the hottest day of the summer, uh, that Saturday when it was 94.
But, um, and it is coming out of the park board, right Joan?
Right, it's coming out of the park board funds, there's money in there.
Okay, well, I mean, we really appreciate the work you do, and yes, we will have to reach out to your brother to say thank you too, so, you know, uh, we'll make sure that we do that, I don't know if it's best to do with a card or something like that, what you'll advise us, okay, thank you.
No, I just, I just was going to make the comment to Dinah, Rich, great job on that, I mean, one day it wasn't there and the next day it was there, and I was like, holy crap, that's, how do you get all that? I mean, you did a great job, it looks fantastic, it's in, it's in complete character with the, with the set that was there already. Uh, nice work, Rich.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Way well received.
Of course, after I was done, I had about six guys telling me they would have helped.
See, sometimes all you have to do is ask.
Maybe, yeah.
Yep, tell them you've got one list for the next time.
I believe all of them, yeah.
Alright.
So, we've had a lot of compliments on the, on the new trail, it's, it's been used a lot.
Oh, and I don't know if anybody's noticed yet or not, but page, I think it's like on page three or something like that, three or four?
Yeah.
In that lakefront, it's on, little article of this, that's pretty nice. Alright, great, so let's move on. Joan, you have more vouchers?
No, believe it or not, we didn't have any extra vouchers for July.
Oh my goodness, okay, good. Alright, so we are, we are done, you know, on that part, now, moving on to C, our attorney search. Um, the council members had heard from me, uh, you know, that I had contacted the, um, uh, the attorneys again, we were just, you know, reached out to them with regard to thanking them for those, you know, interviews they did with us. And speaking to them about, um, a, the, what is it, the retainers they would like and so forth. So we got an answer back from David Holland back, who didn't even answer about anything else, but said he had to withdraw. He had at the beginning been very, very interested, but he withdrew from contention that they'd lost an attorney in their firm. And he has to pick up some of the slack and he can't take on doing the extra, you know, work that he would do for our town. So he's out of the running, so currently we have the two firms, Shaw Friedman's and Associates. And the other one is Greg Zokowski, and goodness, I forgot the name of his firm out of Chesterton area, so. So those are the ones that are still left. Yes, gentlemen?
I was going to say I have the name of that firm here, it's Hodges and Davis.
Okay.
What is, what's the name of it?
Hodges and Davis.
Oh, Hodges, thank you.
Yeah, that's right, Hodges and Davis. Okay, so, you know, I don't know what, uh, we were going to do an executive session, but it didn't work out for us to do, because we were, we need to make sure that our executive session is announced in advance, just like we announce regular public meetings. Um, even though it's only for us to do, so gentlemen, you tell me, um, what you would like to do. Would you like to try to make a determination as of like today, or do you want to do this in an executive session? Uh, make a decision and then make an announcement publicly?
Has anybody interviewed any of these people?
Yes, Rich, yeah.
Yeah, Rich, uh, Michael, myself, Martinez, and then Mike Lencioni as well. Um, I believe we gave feedback to Dinah of the three that we interviewed, kind of who our front runner was, based on the questions and interactions that we met during the interview process.
Yeah, Rich, it should have been among those papers I typed out, I mean, printed off for you, but I don't know, I'm not sure. Remember the paper, all the papers I gave you?
Yeah, I remember the two inter, uh, two lawyer ones, I'm looking for it now.
Okay.
But what I was going to say, I don't think we should wait if we can do this, because, you know, we're, uh, we're in need of, uh, legal advice.
Yeah.
And if, uh, I, I certainly trust the two mics to make a good choice.
Yes.
And Dinah, do you want me to give the feedback to the, to the council?
Yes, absolutely, you'll be able to do that just a minute, but I will just reiterate so that everybody knows. I had originally contacted a number of firms, more than just these three firms, I had actually had seven firms that were contacted. I spoke with them at length, uh, one of them not so much, because they said they'd call me back and they never did, so, you know, I called them back. One with some more left, another message, no interest obviously. I did speak to the others, and after I had narrowed down the seven to the three, is when, um, Mike and Michael took over and interviewed them, uh, to do a second kind of an interview. So go ahead, Michael, can you do a presentation? Present?
Yeah, I mean, just to keep it short, sweet to the point, we interviewed the three. Uh, my front runner, and as well, I don't want to speak for Mike, which I'm sure he'll add some commentary to, it was Laura from Friedman Associates. Uh, that interview went very well, um, it was to the point, the questions were answered in a very precise and direct way, which was what I was looking for, uh, as you know, uh, you know, we don't have time to kind of sit back and talk back and forth. It's either a yes or a no question, we need that yes or no. Um, the questions were answered clearly, um, and I thought just, not just with her, but also just doing the research on the firm, that, uh, you know, the experience was there, uh, not just for one type of law, but for many types of laws that Michiana, the Tom Michiana could deal with and has dealt with in the past. Uh, but again, it was, it was real enjoyment to talk with her, um, I felt the energy, um, outside of the other two, that were very good candidates, so I don't want to discourage them at all. Uh, but my feedback was for Laura from Friedman Associates, I believe that was the firm. Um, and again, I felt when we ended the call that this was, uh, I felt really good about this decision if we went forward based on the follow-up that Dinah gave us, in terms of retainer fees.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Um, just to interject, uh, before my, before Mike says something. Um, each one of these firms responded, and I thought they responded to all of us with regards to their fees. Do you guys recall getting an email like that?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Um, okay, so Mike, uh, Lencioni, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I, I agree with Michael, uh, in large part there, I mean, I just would also add, I did feel, you know, that, Friedman and Associates, and so Shaw Friedman is the, is the managing partner and director. And then, and then Laura, uh, there as, as part of his firm. They, they, they seemed genuinely interested and excited to represent the town. Um, probably had some, you know, kind of some fresh eyes. Um, I, I really appreciated their, their interest. They have done a lot of work in county government, uh, they've also done work with the city of Westville in the past, along with Watawa. They've worked with, uh, you know, a lot of the county attorneys in Michigan City Parks. Uh, they do work with the LaPorte County Sheriff's Department as well. Uh, and then the LaPorte County Department of Transportation, they've done a lot, we had a conversation, they've done a lot of work on, uh, overweight trucks, uh, which kind of led to a conversation relative to our two bridges in town. Uh, and some weight limits that we talked about last, uh, month relative to that. But, um, I thought that they had showed the most, uh, interest and kind of excitement in, in working with us and being flexible, uh, with, you know, with the Michiana Shores, so.
Okay.
That's where, that's where I would, would put my vote.
Okay, alright, I thank you both for your, you know, those comments there. Um, I will, I will just add with regards to, you know, the, um, you know, the original interviews and, uh, and then the follow-up, you know, the responses that we got from them, that Shaw Friedman I like, and I've met him and worked with him and some of the younger attorneys that worked with him when I would go to various county kind of meetings to sit there and listen. They were drainage board, he's done the county commissioners and others that I was at, I know at least. So I like the way that they worked, you know, and I, he and I have spoken for other, he had some issues, you know, that had been going around, and he and I have spoken, uh, you know, about those things. So I like Friedman, you know, Shaw Friedman, and I've never met Laura, but I'm sure she would be fine. Now, when I did speak with Greg Zokowski, he sounded like he would be interested in doing it, and the only concern I have with Shaw Friedman is, is, uh-oh. Can I go on? Alright, the only concern I had with the firm is, they don't really have, um, experience with a small town like ours. Um, whereas for instance, the Greg Zokowski from at Hodges, um, actually does have experience in small towns. Now, Watawa does pretty small too, I guess, but, um, but anyway, um, it's probably bigger than we are, I'm not quite sure, you know, number wise, you know, who's there. So that was just one concern that I had. Now, if we move on to other things, then we have to address what they gave to us as fees. So do you gentlemen remember seeing the fee that Friedman, or Rich, did you want to say something? No? Okay, um, how about the fees that they set? Did you recall seeing? Zokowski said he would be able to send another attorney to town meetings, but he would be able, he says he would make exceptions that come if he was, if he would be the better choice for the days we have town council meeting. Uh, otherwise it would be another attorney who would attend in his place for us. But he said he was willing to go with our, um, the retainer that we had been paying now. Although there was no mention, we did not discuss how much extra money, uh, for the other kind of hourly work and litigation and stuff like that might come in. Shaw Friedman, on the other hand, said that their firm was asking, now we, I didn't do any negotiating, they just told me and that was it. Um, he was talking about, instead of the 1,500 for a quarter, he's talking about 1,000 a month or $3,000 a quarter, which is double, uh, what we'd be paying. And he also said that their general fee for hourly work is $150, it is a fee that they charge to municipal, you know, government type of entities.
Yeah.
So?
So the one lawyer is doubling our fee if we go with him.
Well, he says that's what they would like to get, but we didn't do any kind of negotiating with him either yet.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a thousand dollars a month, so.
Yes.
In, 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 in the legal world, uh, that's not a whole lot.
No, but you know what, if, if they are, if he is charging that kind of an amount, obviously even with Mr. Gunning, there was contract that literally listed all the various different kind of things that he did. So I think that our next step to move this forward then would be to find out exactly what they would include in that, uh, in that retainer fee for us.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that, I agree with that, and to fine-tune, uh, the, the requirements and the expectations. And for the, for the $1,000, his, the hourly rate was a little bit less at 150, of course, that, that you noted Dinah, but, but yeah, I think that's fine, to, to, to get into negotiation, to, uh, have the best interests of the town at the forefront, and see if we can get the most bang for the buck, uh, for a thousand dollars or less, you know, if we're able to.
Yeah, okay, and then, um, should we then, uh, extend this as well to, uh, to discuss what kind of hourly fees or what other stuff? And since we're still talking, should we extend it again to Greg Zokowski from Hodges, or not?
I don't think so, I mean, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta put this horse to bed.
Alright, well then, I, then that means we're going to be making a determination on the attorney, but we don't have our fee yet. So I, I'm sort of hesitant to actually vote for him and before we know?
Well, why don't we, why don't we vote to engage and to finalize a contract? Uh, that then we can, can move on at the ne, have them present at the next meeting, uh, but vote and approve it beforehand, and then they're representing us at the next meeting rather than delaying it.
Okay.
Further.
Okay, I, I like the suggestion. Rich, did you want to say something?
Well, I-
No, that was just, go ahead, Rich, sorry.
Rich, go ahead.
I don't see why we can't negotiate with both, it's just two people, that's all I would say. So one is charging double and the other is, and you like the other one, you're saying?
Well, I mean, I enjoyed speaking with him, it was only one time though, I've not done anything else with him, and he just responded in a letter to me with regards to the interest in, um, you know, in, uh, representing the town and that he would stay with that fee. But again, we have no idea what he would include in that contract, or what he would include for that retainer.
Let me interject two things. Hodges and Davis, if you went, if we went with Greg- Hodges and Davis, if you went, if we went with Greg Sapkowski, which Michael and I both just said, we, he would, out of the two, he would, he would have been our second, well, out of three, he was our second choice.
Right, yes.
Second choice. He cannot meet on Tuesdays. But we would have to change this meeting because he cannot meet on Tuesday. That's number one. Number two, just so everybody's aware, Shaw Freedman does have some, or he had some connection to Michiana Shores. Uh, his family and his father owned uh, that little house that just sold on the lakefront.
Yeah.
That little yellow one that was right, right there.
Yeah.
Linden's. Yep.
As the clerk treasurer, can I make a comment?
Please, Joan.
With this COVID and monies coming in for the next few years, we have no idea how much less we're going to be getting. That includes monies that we get from the riverboat, the monies we get from taxes. You're doing STRs. We don't know how much that is going to be affecting the amount of monies that's coming into the town. I think we have to be very cautious about how much money we are going to be spending. Because we don't, we don't get enough tax dollars to meet all of our expenses now. We have to use all these extra little side items that we're getting.
Yes.
Something to think about.
Good point, Joan. That said, I mean, you know, the legal position uh, as uh, as our counsel for the town is a very important position, as we all know. And, and I, I think we need, we need, need some fresh eyes and uh, and, and a more succinct uh, approach moving forward and I, I'm confident in Freedman brings that to the table.
That's okay, but maybe we need to do a little more negotiating to get this fee down a little bit.
Yes.
I would agree.
Yes. Yeah, and that's why, you know, I suggested that we do some kind of negotiating with them. And as a matter of fact, maybe part of it could be to see if we can get them down, especially in this first, this, right now, and then see what goes forward as we go on. And if things can be improved, you know, that might also be a thought, so. Um, and then in that case, if we are going to make a determination then to go just with, I, I understand that you guys are saying, you know, with, with uh, with Freedman. But because, I don't know, should we make um, we need to vote on this. So, in other words, I would then ask and find out, do you want to move to hire them contingent upon the um, the fees that may come up? It would be a contingency then and leaving them as our first choice? And then we move to Sapkowski as a second choice? If we can't come to an agreement on the fees with Freedman's firm?
Why don't you do your negotiations first? Sounds good.
Yeah, I would say, I would, I would move that we, that we enter into negotiations with Freedman and Associates to finalize the, the cost and to, to document and a mutual agreement on the tasks and the expectations that, that we would bring a uh, agreement that would, that would be voted on at the next meeting and that Freedman and Associates would be present uh, at that meeting and can, can act in our stead, uh, assuming we approve uh, the contract.
Okay.
You want to put all that in writing?
Uh, you take a scare at it, Joan, I'll Q, Q, Q.
Write a book. Yeah, I tried writing this down. Mike will write it out for you and email it to you. Michael Martinez.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it.
Mike Mar, Michael Martinez.
Yes.
Any other comments on that?
No, I agree. Um, I don't think we should move uh, just start negotiating. I mean, this is the first turnaround. That's exactly what we need to do is start rolling it down. Uh, they know where we're at, they know what our funds are. So, I don't want to jump uh, to, jump uh, into this too soon. So, I agree with the kind of Rich.
Okay, alright. So then, but then, do, are you in favor of just doing this with uh, Shaw Freedman firm? The Shaw Freedman and Associates? Or do we do this with both of those firms before we make a final decision?
Well, I, I just made a motion to do it.
I know that you didn't, Michael, yeah. But I was asking for questions before the motion goes on.
Well, does Sapkowski or Solkowski or Sapka, what is the?
Solkowski.
He's kind of a fallback plan, that's what it is, right?
If we can't reach agreement, then, then we're back to the
So, I agree with uh, Michael that we're, we're going to enter in the negotiations and if they won't budge or won't uh, come down, then, then we have the other one. That's why I don't want to tell them no yet.
Okay. Okay, so then we are going to
I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll second the motion that Mike made that nobody remembers.
Okay, yes. I got, I got it down here, okay? Uh, Mike Lencioni moved that we mo, we enter into negotiations uh, and to document the tasks and expectations that uh, could bring us to an agreement uh, with an attorney for our next meeting or at the next meeting. Does that make sense? Mike?
Yes.
Yep, I'll, I'll jot it out and send it to you.
Okay, very good. Okay, so that was Mike's motion. Rich Young seconded. Alright, all in favor of this? I will ask you to vote by uh, roll call. Uh, Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Uh, Rich Young?
Aye.
And Dinah Dumbrus, aye. All present voted in favor of uh, moving forward on the motion that Mike Lencioni made uh, to enter to negotiations and to document the tests and expectations that would be expected of an attorney and to hope that we can reach an agreement uh, and make an offer by the next meeting. So, alright, thank you very much. Let us, yeah, that one's put to rest now, so let's move on to departmental reports. Please, uh, Police Chief Bob Sapkowski?
For the month of July, we were dispatched uh, two hundred and twenty-three calls. There were zero walk-ins. We drove four thousand four hundred and thirty miles. Hours worked was eight hundred and forty-four. Thirty-two hours of that was all for extra patrol on the fourth of July weekend. Uh, reserves worked sixty-eight hours. Traffic stops in Michiana Shores, it was nine, one citation, two written warnings, six verbal warnings. One suspicious subject was checked, four ordinance violations were checked, one courtesy stopped, one alarm for the month. There was no crime reported in Michiana Shores in July.
Alright, thank you, Chief. Does anybody have any questions or comments, uh, Chief Sapkowski?
Yeah, I um, I, I have noticed that, that one Realtor, Bob, uh, the French name?
The yellow name?
Depril?
Ane?
Yeah, they're, they're putting up signs all over pointing to houses for sale. Little signs, just like, like they're arrows.
Not open house signs?
No, not open house, just arrows pointing to where they have houses for sale.
Okay.
I, you know, I uh, pardon?
Do you know which company you're talking about or which uh?
La, La Prille or something like that?
The one that says like, uh, Prill D apostrophe, A P R I L E.
Yeah, like there's one right at uh, right under the Evergreen on the uh, northwest corner of the, of uh, Birchwood, I think, where that, that house that that four-way stop there. There's one uh, opposite Pliski's house uh, laying in the, laying in the weeds.
Yeah, I saw that one too.
Okay, and I don't know if Bob's can, isn't going to make a, a comment on, on that or not, but um, I also wanted to bring up something else. And the other issue was a lot of the talk about people on golf carts and not just people with children on golf carts. Uh, they're definitely not people, they're definitely not licensed drivers who are driving around. Uh, one woman made a comment and you may have seen it too, Chief, that, you know, the boy driving almost lost the girl who was sitting next to him, you know, off of the cart. And then even when it's adults driving, when you're watching them, you know, they don't think stop signs are for them. Um, and they can dip through. So, you know, granted, they're not going to do much damage, but the other car approaching could do a lot of damage. Anything on your part, any suggestions, anything to do?
If you see them, call us with a direction of travel.
Okay.
They're supposed to have, hey, they're supposed to have a license. A, a sticker, they're supposed to have a town sticker on it.
Yeah, but we're talking about ten and eleven-year-olds driving. I see it all the time at our corner.
Bob was trying to say something here. Bob?
Two, two of the ones that I stopped this last month out here were uh, fifteen years old.
Uh-huh.
They, they didn't have a driver's license, so they couldn't drive. Joan, how many registered golf carts do we have in Michiana Shores?
Would you believe it? Only three out of the three hundred that's here?
Yep, I believe it.
Yes. They should have a sticker on their windshield and are supposed to be renewed every year.
Alright.
We'll get to that.
Couple, couple comments on that. Number, number one, just, you know, you gotta remember, you gotta discern between a low-speed vehicle and a golf cart, two different things. One needs a sticker, one doesn't. Number two, that, the person that was commenting on those, those, that, you know, that, with the kids on the carts, that was in, that was in the village of Michiana. Not to say it doesn't happen here too, I get it. But uh, and, and number three, some, some folks were posting pictures of minors and posting them online. Not a good idea.
Oh, that's true.
Well, the other, the other thing is the lady that was complaining on Nextdoor about the golf cart that she almost hit. She, this is at ten o'clock at night, she didn't call the police station until noon the next day.
Yeah.
And then she's on Nextdoor saying, well, we didn't show up. Well, no shit, I mean, sorry. We didn't show up, it was noon the next day.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's ridiculous.
Well, you saw what I said, it's a Bob, it's like if you, you know, you call the police. What, what you posted it on the, on a social website, what the hell is that going to do?
Right.
Rich, you were else going to do something else?
Well, one thing about our golf cart ordinance, and I know it's been in effect for a while. I think Rich Pliski brought it up.
Two thousand and nine.
And that's over four years ago. Uh, the fifty-dollar uh, fee to get your sticker, I think is good. But as a council, I think we need to lower the renewal to like twenty-five. We're not trying to make money, uh, a ton of money off of this. Uh, fifty is a lot and I think it deters people, but I'm guilty.
The one guy, the one guy I talked to was a judge and he said that he could not. Joan, how are you doing that now with the office being closed? Cause he says he tried to get a hold of you or you said you couldn't give him a sticker because the office was closed or something, how are we doing that?
Well, the first, the first time he asked about it, the office was closed. The, the uh, fire department had the whole building shut down when he first checked it to it. And then some time later, uh, he called and he said he would be in, I don't know, Friday or whatever it was, and he didn't come in then. The, the office, we keep the door locked because so many people are coming in without masks. They come right into the office. I've been waiting for a door, for the fire, to our office to be made into a French door so that we can keep that door closed and protect the office staff. And that's not happened yet. So, we are keeping the door closed to the building. All they have to do is give us a call ahead of time or pull on the door when we're there, two thirty.
Joan, 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 getting back, the judge did get his permit.
Yes, he did.
Because I was there that day.
He did get his permit.
That was what Bob was asking.
Yes, he got the permit, but they're, they
So, he's number three, right?
Three or four, but there isn't many that have them.
I know that.
I have someone that was in the Michigan City part of Michiana Shores, not the town, who came over and got one a couple of years ago because he wanted to drive it in Michiana Shores. So, that, I think there's four of them out there.
Right, just uh, to give the council a heads up, then last weekend, we made our first operating lung toxicator arrest on a golf cart. Guy was in Grand Beach. It was like, I think eleven-thirty at night, he was trying to get home and he didn't make it home, so. I think that if that rumor, rumor, that gets out to people that, hey, that we're taking this serious, that hopefully they'll curb it.
Did Jim pound the golf cart?
No, no, we let some sober person
We will be getting signs to put out to show that they do have to get a permit for golf cart in our town.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see in the ordinance where we, that was talked about or I wasn't at the meeting where that was discussed, so.
Well, it was way back in two oh oh nine, do you remember?
I was going to say, it's been in effect for a long time.
It's going to be a little bit salty for the signs because it's going to have to be a custom sign, so.
Oh, yeah, I would imagine we should have some of those kind of signs. I, I was thinking about that too, but this is something we'll put into the uh, letter we want to send out with the booster quote letter, so this will be a big topic for that.
Okay.
What kind of custom sign are you talking about?
For the golf cart permit.
You guys, continue talking, I just need to pick up a piece of paper in the other room. I'll be right back, continue.
What, what, what do you consider a custom sign?
Well, I'm sure that, I don't know if
You mean somebody has to make it?
The company that I buy the signs from, I'm sure don't have a, I don't know, maybe they do.
Well, that's okay. They might, but we also have to have a custom sign for the trail. And we, uh, Rich was going to contact the um, Ten Industries, which is a partnership between private and a prison.
Right.
They have custom signs and we can find out what it's going to cost from them. It may be a lot cheaper for getting any kind of signs from them because they do road signs for the highway.
Hey, hey, Bob.
Yeah.
Bob, just to, just to solidify, you have to be sixteen or over to drive the golf cart. If you see anyone driving under, you know, the age, just give you guys a call.
Yeah, well, now
Okay.
Once we get these, two, if they don't have a sticker, I don't, I saw one sticker that's down, is it supposed to be on the windshield or is it supposed to be on the side of the cart?
We've asked them to put it on the windshield someplace that doesn't obscure their vision.
But Joan, we have a couple of golf carts, one right across street from me that doesn't have a windshield.
Well, then they're going to have to put it on the side someplace, I guess.
So, Bobby, it could be anywhere.
Yeah, well, I prefer it to be on the side, so.
On the side rather than the windshield?
Yes.
We can tell, but which side do you want it on, right side, left side?
Driver's side.
Driver's side.
Okay. I actually have an application in front of me.
But we'll try to relate these.
And it doesn't say that, but you know, you know, display sticker on driver's side.
No, but we can.
You could add that, yeah.
Right, we can add that.
Getting back to what I brought up a few minutes ago, uh, that may, I don't know if it has to go to the planning commissioner or we just bring it up at a board meeting. Um, but I, I really think the fifty-dollar renewal fee is too high.
Well, it's up to the council, they have to decide.
Okay, let's let Dinah, let's move on, let's move on.
Did Dinah come back? She found a piece of paper?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. I'm sorry, you can't see me, you're on the phone. Yeah, oh yeah, I came back ages ago. Um, okay, thank you very much. Well, then I believe that uh, golf cart issue, let's see, maybe um, Rich can work on something from, somebody want to volunteer? Rich, can you work on the golf cart issue then? To make sure the application is correct and good?
I guess.
Okay, alright. Since you drive a golf cart, okay. Let's move on to the next report and that would be the fire chief. Um, he has sent a report, I don't know, Bob, do you have a copy from him too or not, just me? Did he send you one?
No, but the only thing I'm going to say is we've had the busiest July that we've ever had. And when I was at the firehouse earlier today, we're already at the ninety-seventh call.
Wow.
Year, which is unheard of. Year, which is unheard of. We've been super busy.
That's three a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow.
That truck going off more in the last month than, than I ever have.
Yep, they've been busy.
Wow, well, um, that is all. Thank you guys for the work you do, you know, in that. Now, Fire Chief Bendix sent me a report here, so I think I'm going to just, you know, try to shorten it here. He talked about two hundred twenty-three and a half hours spent during the month, either on calls for attention, training at home and away, meetings at home and away, and public relations or equipment maintenance. Meetings took place on July first, eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth. There were various kinds of meetings. Uh, and then this month, they had the calls for attention to shorten it. Four fires in Michiana Shores and eight first responders for Michiana Shores. Michiana, Michigan had five fires and one are first responders. Dunland Beach, three fires, and for the first responders, two, and then mutual aid fires, none but a, um, first responder response one. So, these are some of the things that, that were taking place.
Diana?
Yes.
Can you send me copies of the fire chief and also the police chief reports? I need them.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will forward that to you, yes, Joan, for sure. Okay. Uh, that's it. Now, the building commissioner, Steve Thomas, uh, let me know today that he would not be able to be at our meeting. His youngest daughter's celebrating her birthday, and she's leaving for, I guess, uh, down to Purdue soon, so that they went out as a family tonight to celebrate her birthday. And he said he just, you know, had a couple of, um, uh, permits that he had issued just recently that are, uh, one was, I think, for a roof and to repair a deck, and the other one, I, I don't, here we go. Let me just find what he said, uh, with regards to this. And then he, um, oh, and then there was a shed and a parking pad on Powhatan that he had arranged permits for. And that's all he reported on, you know, for himself today. Now, um, let's see, park board, did Dolly give you-
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay.
Diana?
Yes.
Joan, you would know, I assume, um, there's a new fence going up behind two oh nine Pocagin?
Yes.
Did you, do you remember a permit for that?
There's a permit for it. I sent the lady the, um-
There is a permit?
Ordinance that says it, you know, it cannot be solid. And, um, not over-
It's in the back.
It's in the back, but it's still not supposed to be solid according to our guidelines. And according to our code. And I mentioned that also-
It's supposed to be opaque.
Certain, twenty-five percent.
Well, then Mr. Thomas needs to check on this.
I, I told him when he came in also, you know, that the fences are not being watched close enough to, they, they aren't even checking the front, they aren't checking sides, or he's not, rather.
Well, I would like to know what's going on, what's going on with that house on, uh, Ponte trying to, tried to put a garage in the front yard.
No, that was a, oh, it wasn't a garage, it was a, um, carport.
Uh, Michael, can you, since you were at the meeting, Michael, can you, uh, enlighten Rich on that one?
About the carport?
Yeah, the carport. Can you let him know? I'll be right back.
Yeah, she, uh, no, uh, it was just more of, uh, they stopped it because carports weren't allowed. But the way, what he asked for was a, I forgot the term he used. It was, uh, basically a roof that joined the garage and the house. Um, I, I, the, the name escapes me because I had never heard of it before, but apparently from a-
Portico?
Uh, no, um, I'll see if I can look it up, but either way, it was stopped. Uh, and I think at that point, nothing, uh, the cease and desist had, had, was administered. He tried to, uh, find this as an alternative, uh, but even that, uh, all he said was, we need to see drawings rather than just take his word for it. Uh, we need to see some, something on paper, um, and that's pretty much where it was at. It was denied, and so actual official blueprints, documents, whatever you wanna call it, uh, would be presented to the planning commission. This is for the carport.
So, that's really on the plan commission, not the building commissioner, right?
Yeah, yeah. But, but it still would need a variance because he's putting a structure in front of the house. Now, if you attach it to the house, that might be, that might be a, a stretch. We, we have so many people that try to bend or break our rules.
Yeah, if it's attached to the house, he still has to remain thirty-
Well, it isn't attached to the house right now.
Well, they aren't doing anything now. He's supposed to be coming back to the, to the BZA.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so there's, so that was it.
To the BZA to get a variance?
I believe so. Isn't that right, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because there is an ordinance which I helped push through in, uh, in the plan commission about punishments for people that try to do stuff like this on their own without a permit. And one of them is that, you know, immediate stoppage of work, and then they have to come to the plan commission the next meeting. And if it's a month later, that's too bad. And then there was a double fee and all kinds of stuff.
Well, they did come up for the next meeting, so, and they did have-
We never enforce this. We should.
And Joan and everyone, it was called a breezeway. Breeze, B-R-E-E-Z-E-W-A-way, uh, W-A-
Breezeway's enclosed.
Yeah, so, I don't know how-
It's like part of the house.
A breezeway for the cars?
Yeah, it was, it was all-
Breezeway to the carport.
No, it was all verbal, um, so, I, I think at some point, uh, one of the members just said, look, you gotta put this on paper, you gotta bring it to us like you would any addition. Uh, it's been denied, um, so, once you do that, uh, bring it back and follow the same process.
Okay, well, hopefully, um, see, I, I cannot see how it would be allowed, but they would need a variance.
Have something in, that we can tell, let these people know what they need in order to put an addition on.
We do it all the time, Joan, on that. Every time we send out those three months, uh, breeze from the shores or whatever it is.
It doesn't have on there that they need to have drawn plans, not something on a piece of paper.
Excuse me, I'm gonna interrupt. This is not the place to discuss this. This was just the, uh, building commissioner's report. The plan commission is working on that. They are putting together a list, uh, that, that can be published as well as distributed if somebody's interested in building a house. So, but it's not for us to determine now. They're working on it already. So, let's leave it for them. Okay?
That's good to know.
All right, thank you. If there are no other comments on the building commissioners or on the houses and stuff, I'm going to move towards the park board, um, and the park booster club. I figured, Rich, you can do your own report on the booster club issues. Uh, did Dolly give any kinda, give you any words to say, Joan?
No, not, well, just verbally, the, uh, uh, as it said in the minutes, the, uh, steam shovel was repaired. Um, I can't even remember what else. Uh, we put up the fence through the park board on the path. And, uh, a, a shout out needs to go to, um, Dr. Moffo, is it Moffo?
Oh, Dominic Moffo.
Because he's been cleaning up, uh, the area by the parking area, uh, along the parking area of King Kate Park. And he's been taking a lot of that debris, including some of the branches and things that somebody threw in there to La Porte County. He's been doing a great job.
That's nice.
And he is, he, even better yet, he has talked to his, um, pickleball people, and they have donated money, but this, you know, it has to go before the park board in another two weeks or whatever, to rebuild the fence that was up there by the parking. And they wanna close off, uh, when I, and whoever else helped me, Joe or whoever, put up the fence before, we didn't put a fence on the north side to block off people being able to throw crap in there. And he's got donations to do that.
Oh, that's nice.
But the park board, I told him he had to go, you know, before the park board. And, uh, I, you know, unfortunately, you know, a four foot high fence won't stop somebody with a truck that might wanna do that, but it'll help. It, you know, deter ninety percent of the people, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Um-
Oh, great, thanks, Rich.
And I still, I do have what Joan mentioned earlier, the, uh, handicap steam shovel. Just gotta figure out if we wanna put it, because, you know, obviously, somebody has to be able to wheel up in a wheelchair. And the only way I can see that right now is to put it on the edge of the sandbox that has that roof at King Kate.
Yeah.
And if we do that, then we have to probably make a platform, not so much so he could wheel up on it, but if they're gonna take sand out of the sandbox, I'll dump it, you know, right on the grass, I'm afraid.
Ah, wow.
So, that, that's gotta be done. Um-
Okay.
And then the park board or the boosters are looking at the benches and the receptacles and the doggy, doggy mitt, um, stations for the new part of, the new path. And I'll tell you what, these benches are not cheap. It's unreal what they, what they ask for. But, and the receptacles, in my opinion, are even worse, you know, they get a, a wooden or metal receptacle to put a garbage can in. And then, uh, the doggy bags, you know, so we're, you know, the, the meeting, I think is the twenty-fourth this month.
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Yes, it's the twenty-fourth.
So, we will discuss all that.
All right, thank you, Rich. Okay. Thank you very much for your, uh, for report. Um, okay, Bob, a road commissioner report, please?
The only thing I got for July is we had a couple of trees that came down. We took care of. That's about it.
Okay.
Bob?
Yeah.
Bob, I had a lady call today on, uh, on the west side, oh gosh, I can't think of it. Um, Bittersweet? No, it's not Bittersweet. What is it?
Pretty down on Lupine earlier today.
Lupine, and through that area, another tree came down, she said, with a storm. And she said, she said, you're doing- Okay, he said, you're doing a good job taking care of the roads, most of the roadsides in Michiana, but you keep missing that corner of the town, and she'd like to see that cleaned up a little bit, too.
No, I mowed there today, so.
I go Mrs. Kennedy, Bob, if you wanna know.
All right.
She'll keep you on-
She's a very nice lady.
She is, she is, and she's got a right to complain.
Okay, so, thank you very much, uh, for the, Bob, for the roads, uh, roads report. Anything else on roads themselves, on the way, if and when we'll have some repairs done?
Uh, I'm waiting to hear how much I have in the paving budget for this year. That way I've got some kinda idea how many roads we can do.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, plan commission, um, let's see, I don't think Howard, Howard didn't give me anything, uh, separately for the plan commission. But, uh, I'm going to try to remember what some of the things that we did. Michael helped me out, and Ralph, you were present for that too, so, um, there was, uh, some discussion with regards to working on the rules and procedures of the, uh, of the plan commission. Uh, there was some discussion taking place with regards to unsafe houses because, um, there are several of those, and as a matter of fact, I heard about a fourth one the other day. I got a phone call. I didn't realize there was that fourth one, but anyway. Uh, that, that was also being discussed by the, uh, plan commission, how to approach that and the ordinance that we have.
And Diana, Diana, just to add to that, I think we voted, we voted, uh, to just shelve that for now. Um, table, it should I say, is because the effort that it would take to review that, I think it was a nine or ten page document.
No, twenty-one pages, twenty-one.
Okay, even, even worse, uh, for us to re, revise that over three or four houses. Um, yes, we'll get to it, but it wasn't one of those pressing issues.
True, thank you, yeah. And then, uh, and then we addressed a couple of, um, issues with regards to, one of which was the putting together of a, of this, um, notice, that notice, what people need.
I'll tell you what, I have it up. So, uh, we did the rules and procedures review that you just mentioned. Uh, we also talked about the checklist for permit applications that's gonna be, uh, un undertaking. Uh, we just talked about the unsafe buildings that we mentioned as well. Um, then we went on to talk about Mark Sanders and the carport that you just mentioned about the breezeway. Um, and then we got into a bigger discussion with Matt Ruder at thirty-eight eleven Michiana Drive about, uh, I think it was just expanding the stairs, um, on the, both sides of the property. And then that's when we got into the discussion of a non-performing lot. But in the end, I believe we voted for Matt to actually proceed with the, um, lengthening of his stairs on both ends. I wanna say they're on the east and west side. I could be wrong.
It's on the, um, it's on the west side of the house, the steps.
West side, okay. So, we ended up, uh, approving that as well.
Okay, all right.
Help you out.
Great, well, that's great. Thank you so much, Michael, okay, uh, for that. Okay, BZA report, and I've got something here for the BZA. If you bear with me, I'm going to read this out. Let me open this up. All right, uh, BZA report was this. They met Thursday, August sixth. Uh, all members were present, along with Joan Lewis and a sergeant-at-arms, Officer Radke. All went well. Three cases were heard, two approvals were granted, and one was voted to continue. The next meeting was set for September second, uh, twenty-twenty, when they hoped to hear at least two more cases. Um, as well, the attorney gunning was also present at this meeting. So, that's in short, what took place at the, uh, at the BZA meeting this, that took place on the sixth. Um, all right, so, uh, oh, white dish drainage board, there's nothing to report. Thank goodness, we're not on their agenda. Uh, regarding the website, we're still having issues with the website. They've been doing some changes that were supposed to be done, but then everything disappears off the top of it. So, just FYI, I would like to say that I'm looking into finding out if we can use another website service uh, with regards to this, what kind of cost would be involved and so forth. And on the other hand, I am currently taking a, um, Google Forums class and I can, right now, I'm working on designing websites in my class. So, I figure if I can figure that out, maybe I can do our things from start to finish. So, anyway, we'll see how that goes. Um-
Good.
But anyway, so that's a report on the website, and I am sorry, I mean, I was able to post this, but, you know, a lot of things, I look every day, I look at it, and something else is missing, something else has changed, and, you know, so, um, and I'm having a hard time reaching the actual boss. I mean, he's been sort of avoiding me. I think that we don't pay them that much, and they're sort of like, oh, well, you know, who cares? So, anyway, that's just my, that's just my comment on the site. Anyway, nothing to report from NERC, nothing new from them. And, um, as always, I participate in the La Porte County COVID-nineteen meetings, which take place on Thursdays. There'd be a Zoom, so there's information that's given, so I talk about our town as, you know, mentioned, you know, when they ask about what's going on with us, and just report to them about that. But they did say in the last meeting that the, uh, there were cases that were beginning to creep up. Plus, you know, they've got the La Porte County mask mandate and asked, that we ask that our people also wear masks when they're walking around in public, among other people, so, you know, pretty much that was about it, okay? If there are no other questions and comments on reports, I'd like to move to unfinished business. And, um, we need to, uh, the first item that would come up over here is, and some of these may not even need to be addressed now, cause we sort of did address the road patching thing. But leaf pickup for the town, um, we want, so we have our attorney, hopefully we can put together this document. We may even be able to work on it in advance. But I wanted to see if there was anyone among the town council members who would like to volunteer to run with that particular assignment, because we really should get that done and ready to go as fast as we can to get it lined up for this call. So, the leaf pickup, uh, RFP, and, uh, no volunteers there, huh?
We're on A, unfinished business?
Yes, A, leaf pickup for the town. So, we need to put together our request- So we need to put together our request for proposals. Um, I got a copy from the one that they used in Long Beach and Joan, uh, provided a, a copy of, um, the refuse contract that we could look at. So if I've got somebody who can volunteer to help work on that, that would really be good.
I'd like to help work on it in regards to the money paying.
Okay, excellent. That's good. Okay.
Doolin Beach hired Northwoods Construction to do pickup theirs last year.
They did last year, yeah. I, I did not call Northwoods. I called several others that I found out about from, um, Long Beach, you know. Um, actually, Bill DeFuniak gave me the names of several companies and I did contact them. And some are interested, some said absolutely not because they're too busy, they can't do it. But the others did seem to be interested, but we've got this, to get this RFP out and we've got to make this, you know, some kind of a, you know, get it together, put out a closed bid for this and see what, what happens. Um, anyway, but we have to work on it because it's already August. So, um, I take it, okay, Joan will work on it. Nobody else, huh? All right. Joan, looks like you and I will have to work on it together then.
Yeah, sorry, Dinah.
Oh, leave it to the women. We'll work it out.
Yeah.
Dinah, sorry, just, just looking for, what you're looking for is something that is replicated for that Long Beach, uh, the Long Beach road.
Pretty much. Joan has an art, pretty mu, I think that it would be really, uh, pretty, basically, pretty much the same thing. Joan provided the, uh, the, uh, RFP that's used for the refus. So that would be, you know, could guide maybe something that we've already done. But the Long Beach ones seem to be pretty good. Uh, the big difference on beaches that they actually have a place where they, they've got their own machines that are used for the leads.
Right, yeah.
Company comes in and just collects them also.
So, um, I'll tell you what, if you can relieve yourself by, um, of, of responsibility, I'll, I'll, Joan.
Okay.
The killing field just intended example where I fucking car, bed, you know, supply their own equipment and gas. But then they, it's where it has, you know, base grow gas and vehicles. You're going to be able to help me with that and kind of what the ends and outs are, right?
Okay.
Are you going to be on the committee?
Yes, that would be, you would make the committee.
Okay, sure. Committee is just being, Joan, if that's just what the committee is.
Well, that's all, that's all we need. We just need someone to, to run with this, okay? So I appreciate this. Thank you very much, Michael. If you can do this, Joan, then that would be great. And I will forward tonight to you the letter that I got from Bill DeFuniak. If I haven't sent it to you already, I'll resend it again. Okay?
Dinah?
Yes.
Dinah?
Yes, Rich.
Can I ask, are we talking about the whole town or?
The whole town.
People that want to participate?
We're asking, it's going to be for the whole town and everybody will get a fee with their, uh, refuse bill.
Okay, so it'll be like the refuge.
Yes, yes. It would be for everybody because there's no way to pick and choose. You, we've already, you know, the town has done that stuff before. So it would be for the entire town and then that way everybody's covered.
So it'll be like the Michigan side, just put it, put all your leaves out front and this company will pick it up.
Yes, yes. That's the plan.
So if you decide to put it on, your neighbors won't make any difference because they're paying for it, too?
Yeah.
Sometimes I put it on the Michigan. Now I don't.
All right.
Seen it done.
Okay.
Oh, believe me, it's done.
Okay. All right. So if no other questions on that, thank you, Michael and Joan, for handling that then. Uh, any updates for us on the short-term rentals ordinance, uh, with things that are going on?
No, except you got permits that I sent you.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we probably need to review those.
We need all kinds of equipment.
Yes, and that's under new business, right there. It's going to be under nine. But it was just like anything else, updating with regards to anything. If we don't have any other comments to make about that right now, then we can move on.
We, I do, yes, other, you know, ba- basically, just to comment that, uh, you know, the process is, is moving. Uh, we have the first two to review. Um, I've got a list that, uh, that others have shared and, and I've looked at their thirty-eight properties that are advertised on just BRBO and Airbnb. Thirty-eight unique properties that are listed as, as rentals. Now, of course, none of the addresses are included. So, you know, I, I, I think I know where most of them are. Uh, and I'll be working with a couple of folks to, to make sure we have a list. But now, once we get the addresses, then Joan will work with you just to kind of get, get names together and we'll need to, to, uh, send out some additional correspondence to make sure that those folks are in compliance. Uh, you know, my guess is there are some number of people that are renting without a permit right now. How many?
I think there's quite a few.
There is a.
There is quite a few.
But we need to enforce that now, that we're, that we're reviewing permits and, uh, and there's a pathway in place or else it's not fair to those that have gone through a burden to get a permit.
Absolutely, oh, absolutely. You're absolutely right. But I think that now that all of this has started is a good time that, you know, we can start the actual enforcing with, you know, with regards, especially firstly with the letters that go out. So, you know, thank you very much. Um, uh, road sign replacements, any, oh, I should have asked about that in roads, chief, I'm sorry. So road signs, anything else going on with those? Do we need anything else?
I just need to order our beautis again because somebody keeps stealing the sign.
Oh. Okay, they like that name, huh? I guess.
I guess so.
Okay. And then we already talked about, well, we talked about the roads, but the ta, patching would come in with regards to the roads on the other, I was, so. All right, I'll have to just move those out.
Dinah?
Yes.
Dinah?
Yes.
Two things to Bob. Uh, don't, don't hesitate to check out that prison, um, address.
Oh, yes.
I can give it to you if you want it.
That's got a.
Because their signs are, I'm sure, cheaper. I'm looking.
Yeah. And they don't have to come from Colorado.
Yeah, it's Plainfield, Indiana. Bob, you got a pen?
I already know it's Pen Products.
Okay. Sounds good.
Well, I don't see that on the Indiana Correctional Industry Central Office.
Thank you, Rich.
If you need the number, let me know.
Okay.
And, and then with the road patching, that same Mrs. Kennedy I mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
Really complaining and there is a big patch needed at, uh, what is it, um, Lupine and Bittersweet.
Right. That's the one I was thinking of. Thanks.
Yeah, I saw it today.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to bring it up, the letter.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have to, wait, Dinah, do we have to go back to unfinished and vote on the short-term rental or, you know, the?
No, there's, there's nothing to vote on there. We're moving to new business, which will be the applications for the permits. That's the next step.
Well, why am I looking at short-term rentals ordinance? Box oh oh one twenty twenty, motion second.
That, that's my.
So we don't need to vote on that, Joan?
No, I don't know what she's going to do with it. I thought they were going to be voted on and.
Yes.
Bitter like, gee, you.
We're moving into that next. That's coming next.
New business.
Yes, new business. It's coming right now.
Oh, you moved it to new business. Okay.
Well, no, all we did is we updated information on short-term rentals and what's going on in the town. The rental permits are coming now. In new business, it is nine A and we will begin with Ralph Box's application. All right.
I don't have a nine, I don't have a nine A on my, I don't have a nine A on my agenda.
Okay, you printed off there earlier when I sent a second one later, but that's okay. All right, all right, new business. And it is nine A short-term rental permit, Ralph Box.
Okay, can I make a comment on Ralph Box?
Please, yes, I want you to handle this.
I reviewed, I reviewed it in, in, uh, in entirety. Ralph has got everything that, that was requested. They've had the inspection. Their inspector denoted what the, what the total occupancy was. He's got two bedrooms and one bath. That's six people. That's what's noted on the application. Everything is in order. It should be approved.
Okay. Any questions from, uh, Michael Martinez or Rich?
Well, I make a motion to approve
Okay.
The application for Ralph Box for a short-term rent.
Okay. Rich Young moves. I need a second.
I'll second.
Martinez second.
All right, Michael Martinez.
Who was that?
Martinez, there you go.
Okay, Rich Young moved, Michael Martinez seconded to approve, uh, Ralph Box's application for, uh, short-term rental permit. Uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Mike Lencioni?
Aye.
Rich Young?
Aye.
Dinah Dumbrus, aye. All present voted in favor of approving the short-term rental permit for Ralph Box. Um, all right, now, I only had indicated, uh, uh, when I put together the agenda, I only added Ralph Boxes. But I understand that the Willys also, um, I, that showed up. Joan had the documents. So B would be the Willie application.
Well, I, I emailed the documents to everybody.
I, we got them, Joan.
Okay, thank you.
Couple, couple things real quick. Yeah, we, you, probably you and I both need to sign Ralph's permit. So, so if you have that, Dinah, and want to sign, we can just trade it, you know, over the fence here.
Okay, very good.
I have, I have the permits, the, the, the placard. I will, I will fill that out and laminate it and Ralph will give you the, the sign, will sign off and get you the placard here. Uh, just, you know, give it forty-eight hours, all right?
All right.
Okay, so, so on the Willy's one, I reviewed that in entirety as well. Um, there seems to be a discrepancy in that one. And that discrepancy is that they denoted that their total maximum occupancy should be ten people, but they only have one bedroom and one bathroom according to the La Porte County Assessor's Office, which I am looking at that site right now. Um, one bedroom, one bathroom. So they get two people per the bedroom, two people per the bathroom for a total max, maximum occupancy of four people, not ten people in a twelve-hundred-square-foot dwelling. So we have the option of approving it with, for four people or kicking it back to them for a month and have them re, uh, uh, calibrate it properly. But as it stands right now, they're asking for ten, not four.
Well, you know, I would then make a recommendation and say that if we approve it, we approve it strictly for four. And if they want to approve it or they want to apply for larger, then they have to show actual, uh, proof that there is room for six additional people in that house.
Well, we said that the proof has to jive what's, what's, what they're paying taxes on.
Okay, well, then that's four people. I don't know. What, what would be the best, I, you tell me, you guys are doing this, what would be the best suggestion then?
I'd say we approve it for four people, but that's it, not ten people.
Okay.
And Mike, on the application, I'm sorry, I didn't look at this one. This has ten on the actual document, application?
Yes, the, on the inspection page, they've checked everything off and then it's set, it says set to total occupancy and they have it at ten. I mean, so you can't, you can't, I mean, I don't even know how you physically fit ten people in a twelve-hundred-foot square foot, one-bedroom place, but, uh.
I, I've seen it, yeah.
Bathroom with, with, with nine other people, let's put it that way.
Does anybody know if this is their own, their old house across from the low park?
I think this is the house that Dana de Bajia lived in for several years.
Okay.
It's next door to their house, Rich.
Right. And that very well could be one bedroom.
It is one bedroom according to the Assessor's Office.
I think at the BZA, they said it had two bedrooms.
But I'm looking at the, the application as soon as it was granted.
But, but the Assessor's Office is what you're paying taxes on. I mean, loft
That's correct.
Is a bedroom.
There, there's a lot of cheats on that. We can't really go by that.
Well, but the Assessor's Office has it at one.
Well, you got to have a, a guideline somewhere.
The guideline is.
But Mike, I'm looking at the, the first page, that's all I had. And it says granted. You know, decision.
No, no, that was the.
The variance was granted through the BZA, but the permit, that's where the inspector signs off and subscribes.
All right, all right.
So you can approve it.
Right now. Excuse me, was there another question or comment? Okay.
Here, here's my comment. Here, here's, here's my comment. It's a Mike's most question. If it has ten on there, I want a clean document that specifically says the number of people that should be approved. Because, I mean, these are, this is a big deal, right? Uh, would we, I'm just asking, are we going to cross out the ten, put four and then rotate it? I, I want everything to be black and white. Um, I don't want them to think they were approved for ten. I mean, they'll already send an email, but.
Well, that's, that's a good point. That's a very good point.
I'd rather have one document.
Well, can I make a suggestion?
That's good. Joan?
Can, yes. Why don't we send it back to them so they can reapply with you and show you proof of the, how many bedrooms or how many baths or bath and half or whatever they have in that house? And then, because this goes with the real estate. This, this is, this is a legal document.
Joan, there's two, 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 I agree with you on the first part. I disagree with you on the second part. And the reason is, our ordinance states specifically that the number of bedrooms is dictated by what is noted in with the Assessor's Office of La Porte County and the Beacon website. That is what is in the ordinance and the Beacon website has one bedroom. If there are two bedrooms, then they need to adjust that with the Assessor's Office and then we could consider it as two. But they'll be getting taxed as a two-bedroom, not a one-bedroom then. The fairness.
I under, I understand what you're saying, but I, but what the, they have on Beacon and they, which is really comes from the Assessor's Office, that states that that should not be used for a legal document.
It's not.
Did you read that? They've got a caveat in there. It says it's not to be used for a legal document.
Using it as guidance to determine actual bedrooms instead of lofts and cubbies and nooks and, and areas under stairs.
I, I understand where you're coming from. A bedroom includes a closet.
A closet, yes. So.
That's right. I'm familiar with that, but I'm also trying to point out that what you're doing with the short-term rentals is we're making them, that that's going to be a legal document. We have to make sure they get recorded with everybody at the courthouse once this is all done.
Okay.
So I would suggest that we get it right the first time rather than going ahead and approve it based on, you know, what you're saying is the, what the assessor has, that's Beacon. Just I'm sure that's what you're referring to. Then that needs.
Joan, we are saying to push it back.
I'm sorry?
No, I'm just trying to, yeah, we're, I just want to cut this conversation short and remind you that, Joan, we agree with you that, you know, we're going to push this back to the Willys and make sure they update it with the correct, uh, occupancy that we have. I, I don't want to cross something out in an official legal document and come back and buy this and buy that.
Yes, thank.
I agree.
My point exactly. Thank you.
Okay, so, so right now, just to me, to be clear, we are now, we are not making, uh, we are not approving the Willy's, uh, petition until they have brought us a petition that actually reflects the number of bedrooms and bathrooms they have in their home. And if there's any kind of a difference, then they have to show us information, uh, to that effect.
Well, there's no, there's nothing that they're going to show us. It's one bedroom, one bath.
Okay.
And if they want it more than that, they, they have to go change it through the Assessor's Office.
Okay, all right. All right, so then, uh, and who is going to generate this notice to them?
I can send that, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So Michael Lencioni will send the notice to the Willys. All right, thank you.
Or else I'll send it to you, Joan, through them if I don't have their e, their email.
Okay, well, right. I could also just send her an email and let her know. They're easy to deal with. I'll let them know that there's a discrepancy between what's in the, in their.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
There's what's in their permit request and also what the Assessor's Office or Beacon, whichever.
And, and if you're sending emails, please make sure you just share it with the other town council members on this, okay? Um, for any of these, okay? Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Before, Dinah?
Yes.
Michael, Mike Lencioni.
Yeah.
Does our, uh, ordinance spell out that, you know, bedrooms are determined by the La Porte County, whatever?
Yes, it does.
Okay, then, then we're on good ground.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Rich. Okay, if we, if I may, then, I'm going to move this on to, uh, number 10, there is no attorney report, I received no correspondence from Mr. Gunning. Uh, so there is nothing to report on that. And now I'm going to just ask if there's, uh, any other miscellaneous business that you wanted brought up? Nope, okay, um, I have not received any particular communications in the recent past. Uh, anybody else? Joan?
I haven't, now, I haven't received any communications that I can, that I can recall, to be honest with you, I usually try and send it all on to you.
Okay, thank you.
But I do have a comment.
Okay.
I think in your newsletter, or what you wanna call, whatever you're sending out, that we make a notation in there about, uh, our lovable pets need their owner's help in cleaning up after them, and not letting them defecate on people's property. We've got enough woods around here, they can do it in the wooded area.
Thank you very much. I, and I agree completely with you, because I think some people think that once they come out here, that lawn that people have mowed is part of the woods or something, I don't know. Cause I almost stepped in it twice.
I just had a neighbor tell me that, well, that's your property to take care of. And I went, beg your pardon? Yes, I do take care of it, but that doesn't mean I have to clean up after your dogs.
Yeah, that's true.
But anyway, and it's not just here, I've noticed it all over town, it, it's happened, but. Uh, and I know they come out here to have a good time and not worry about anything, but we do live here 24/7.
Yep. All right, thank you for the comment, I think that's valuable, thank you. All right, public comments?
Are we open to the public?
Uh, well, we do, we did say in the beginning that, uh, we can open up to public for a, a public comment, for very short comments, not long digressions.
But they have, but they. Does Mike have to do that on the computer? Do they have to unmute him?
Anybody can, uh, unmute themselves.
Yeah, people can unmute themselves, wave a hand, please. Anybody wanna say, okay, Peter Cummins?
Good evening, I just want, I'm, we're new residents to 3843 Birchwood Trail, we bought in December of 2018, um, I've had the pleasure to get to know Mike a little bit, cause we do do some short-term rentals, um, and we're working through that process and trying to be a good neighbor. Um, but I also come to it, I spent 15 years as a city manager along Chicago's North Shore. I'm, I'm a real estate agent today, but would be happy to uh, offer my service and assistance if you needed anything in that regard, so.
All right, thank you.
And I would, just for clarity, for Peter's situation, it's his primary residence that he rents, so he, he doesn't need to have a, a rip short-term rental permit uh, as mandated by Indiana State Law relative to your primary residence.
No, I appreciate that, Mike, but I'm also sad, just because there's confusion from time to time with a couple of my neighbors too, that if there was a need for us to comply, we would, of course.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Excellent.
What is Peter's last name, please?
Cummins.
Cummins.
Cummins, oh, yes, I've talked Cummins, thank you.
You always spend so helpful, but having spent 15 years in this business, your volunteer services in sitting through your meeting tonight is remarkable, so thank you for.
And we, we, and we value anybody else's offers to help out, so.
I've written a few RFPs in my day, relief collection and other things, so I'm more than happy to help if.
Excellent, excellent, make sure, have you signed up for the, uh, email to be on the email list?
I have not, I.
Okay, go through the, uh, go to the website, and then send me an email, okay?
Okay, but you've created an incredible community there, and we look forward to being there full-time for a long time, so.
Well, we love it here, so, thank you, welcome.
Well, nobody created it, it is developed. Over a long time.
Yeah.
Yep, our core guy there did not develop it.
No, I appreciate that, for sure.
Yeah. And we appreciate your honesty with the, the short-term thing.
Oh, of course.
A lot of people are not honest about it.
Well, and I sell residential real estate, and you need to know that the values in Michiana Shores right now are a bit, they're spiking.
Well, the houses are going like crazy.
Right.
All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, all right, good mea- good meeting you, any other comments? I don't see any waving, I don't see any un, uh, unmuting from anybody else, at this point, I will, uh, close public comments. Uh, any council comments?
Yeah, this is Michael Martinez, um, I had a comment. Um, where do we lie on the code enforcement officer position? I know Dinah and I kind of briefly chatted right before today, but Rich, I didn't know if you wanted to kind of expel, uh, expand on the conversation of the options out there, or.
Well, there were a couple, Rich, remember that you spoke to me about where you made some suggestions, maybe?
About the COVID?
No, no, about a code enforcer going forward.
Oh, code enforcer. The he, the she that turned into a he.
Yeah.
Was an ex-resident, and a very highly respected resident. But he's like 80 years old, and he realized it just, uh, he's, and he had the perfect te- uh, temperament for it. It just, you know, i- it was gonna be rough the first year, and I think he's having issues at home, so. Uh, I don't have a solution. Uh, just other than we gotta get, we gotta find somebody in town. But, yeah, Jo- and this guy, uh, made comments, made suggestions, like turning towards homeland security. Uh, if we wanted to hire, you know, it was a different topic, but hire our own, our own police force, uh, you, the two Mikes don't know the issue we had with, uh, Long Beach before.
Well, I gave them a short little rundown of what was going on when Ray was on the plan for that, but, uh, but that would be a topic to discuss in further, you know? But I think Michael just wanted to see if you had, you know, made some other kinda, kinda suggestions, so.
Yeah, but the, the guy I was looking at, uh, and he really would have, cause he had the perfect temperament for it, you know, he wouldn't get angry, he wouldn't, but he just, just felt it was, it was gonna be too much, but I, I really think the the cost, what we're willing to pay is probably not high enough, that's my comment.
One of the other things that had been brought up, Rich, and I think you and I had said it too, and I know that I spoke about it with someone, um, on the Plan Commission, and it was with regards to, uh, potentially, depending on what goes on, I know our building commissioner currently is pretty swamped with work, and I don't know, he said he'd be willing to do some extra work. Uh, actually, cause I texted him about that today, and he said he'd be willing to do some extra work as, you know, the, uh, enforcer, but you know, right now, he's rather swamped, and he wouldn't be able to come running, um, at a shout to come and do something, was his comment, so I don't know how that would be worked out. But going forward, perhaps, and it depends on what happens, whether he stays in this position, he leaves, we get somebody new, that maybe we get somebody would be, who would be actually a good, strong building commissioner, as well as a code enforcer, that, to where, you know, the way they're supposed to, according to the way we actually, you know, started out, you know, doing this, so, anyway, but these are just comments, and we would work on this going forward.
But that would help the budget.
If you want my opinion, our building inspector is never here to begin with.
That's right, he's not, so I don't.
And he's not gonna be here for the code enforcement. And I'm not condemning him, I'm not critis- you know, he, he is a full-time worker. He's all over the, the northwest Indiana area.
Oh, yeah, but he's, he is very busy, so.
So, I, we need somebody in town, or in, very close, and we may have to pay more than, than we're offering, but and, and it's really only gonna be the first year or two, and then when the good old residents of ours.
Rich.
When the, yeah, when the good old residents of ours realize we're serious. Executive session is what you say.
Right, we need to discuss this at an executive session.
Okay, so I will then close, unless there are any other burning council comments? I would like to call for an adjournment.
I have one other, one other comment, and it, it's something that we've talked about, we, we, the Plan Commission, and I, we had started it a while ago, uh, the condemnation of houses, because we're getting, there's one, I and Joan, do we own those, uh, do we own? Are they in our town, just, uh, east of the stables?
Just east of the stables? No.
No? How, but they're up to Dreamwald.
I know, they're up to Dreamwald, but that property was blighted years ago for farming, and it's not been changed or.
But that one house, I mean, there are trees down, there's.
Oh, it's terrible, okay.
There are five or six houses that need condemning.
Right, Rich, Rich, but see, we addressed this a little bit when we talked about the report from the Plan Commission, and, uh, there is that, and you might remember that on Safe Houses Ordinance that Mr. Gunning had given to us already last year, you were still on the plan. So basically.
It was 40-some pages, yeah?
Well, yeah, but I've, I've gotta condense to 21 now. Uh, but regardless, we are going to be looking at that, that's been tabled temporarily, and we need to get a new attorney on before we can actually approach.
Okay, okay, we're working on it.
Yes, we are working on it, it is, so.
Because we, we definitely have houses.
I got one, I got one comment that I'll make that ties in with Rich's. But that property, Rich, you're talking about over by the stables, I spoke to the owner of the one next door to that, that's, that's rented. That's not in Michiana Shores, it's in the township, but that was, that's where the trash problem was coming from.
Yep, yep, yep.
Over on, over, uh, uh, you know, on the other road there, and, uh, I spoke to the owner, and then I spoke to the La Porte County Sheriff's Office, and they took care of it, and it hasn't been a problem since then. Now, it's still a, it's still a, a terrible blighted property, as is the one next door to it.
Yeah.
Comment then that's tangential to that is just about trash in general too, so for that newsletter that comes out, Dinah?
Yeah.
It, it's frankly horrible, and you guys all see it. Every weekend, there's, there's trash cans with trash overflowing, people leave food waste in bags. I got back the can, and raccoons get in there every time. Sony was out again yesterday, picking up two other people's garbage that has been chewed up by a raccoon and screwed all over, and we have to put it all in our can, because people are just, it's irresponsible, I don't understand how you can't just pick up your own damn garbage, I mean, how hard is it? But, but it's terrible, and it's all, it's all the way to Long Beach, and it's, it's just everywhere. People think, and it's disrespectful that, hell, if I was the guy picking up the trash, I'd just drive by and keep going, I'm not gonna give up. All this crap.
Hey, thank you, Mike, you're, you're absolutely right, and I actually got a suggestion from, um, town president nearby us, who said that when people's homes show this kind of trash, that they, they take photographs of what it looks like, and then they order them a second can and bill them for two cans.
What did they bill?
That owner.
Oh, you mean, a- at an individual house?
Yes, yes, that's what, you know, that's where some people at some homes, they are, they just leave everything, too many bags on and whatever. But, uh, but they order them a second can, and then they bill them for two. Uh, so, and then when they're surprised, but I think first of all, they sent them a letter and told them, but, look, you gotta pick up your trash, you can't leave it this way. And then if nothing is done the next month, then they order the can and they bill them double, so. You know, so that might be a solution, it'll be something for us to look at, you know, going, and going. Thanks, Sonia, Ray saw her working out there, you know, too, so, you know, thank you, thank her from us, you know, for, for all the time that she offers, you know, to the town, we really appreciate it. Okay, any more comments, or can we wrap up? Please? All right, I'm not hearing anything, I'm closing my ears, um, I'd like someone to move for an adjournment.
I'm holding adjournment for June.
Uh, is that Michael, or Rich? We did it.
I'll check, I'll check.
Michael Martinez moved, Rich Young seconded, I am calling this meeting adjourned at 8:50 PM, thank you very much to everyone.